And for the Pledge of Legions. The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carpenter?
Here.
Mr. Fitzier? Mr. Culver?
Here.
Mr. Cussero?
Here.
Mr. Nishai? Ms. Redman?
Uh, here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Solomon?
Here.
And Mr. Tinlin?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, item number four is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they'd like to make in tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll approve it as it stands, and we'll move on to number five, which is approval of the regular meeting minutes from February thirteenth, 2024, our last meeting.
I propose we approve the meeting minutes from our last meeting on February thirteenth.
Support?
Motion support. Anybody make changes, corrections?
Um, I might, sorry, I'm all over. I guess, um, I'm just trying to pull it up, but I guess I wanted to make sure that we had, thanks, that we had noted the exact reasons for the continuance of the...
Delaying the...
Yeah, um... I guess for now, no, but, um, you know, I would...
It was done, so I don't know if it's actually called out in the minutes, but, uh...
I think it's important to have, like, a finding of fact in there, that the Planning Commission was not given the proper ordinance in order to thoroughly evaluate that site plan, so if we can just kind of make a finding of fact along that in the minutes.
I believe findings of fact have to be approved during that meeting.
Okay, well, or just, I guess you don't have to make a true finding of fact, um, then I would like it to be spelled out clearly in there.
I believe I did summarize that it was done because there was some confusion with the understanding of the PUD, and I don't have the minutes in front of me, I apologize right now, but I believe I called that out at some point in the summary of the conversation. But if it's not clearly stated, I can add that, if that's sufficient for the Planning Commission.
Okay, as long as it's addressed, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. But otherwise, I have no discussion.
Okay, so still a motion support, we will, with you, do some change, if necessary?
Yep. So it's just to double-check to make sure it's specifically called out, that the confusion was due to the RM two-language compared to the city center?
Right.
Is that correct?
And I guess I don't know if you should include in there that we would like to have them, those residents mailed again for our next meeting, when they come in front of us. I believe that was something that we...
And we'll have that conversation during the staff report.
When it comes up, because until they decide when they're going to come back in front of us, we don't know when to do the mailing on it.
Um, just the point, I don't need a date, just the point that the commission wanted those residents mailed.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Which I didn't see in the minutes.
I have an update for that, which I was going to give during the staff report, not during discussion in the minutes, but if that wants, if the commission wants that to be specifically put in the minutes from last meeting, it can be...
I think it's an important, an important point, that the, I felt like the whole commission agreed upon that. Maybe I'm wrong.
Can you add it as a note?
I can add it to the minutes, absolutely.
And we'll still go with the same...
Yep.
Motion and second, and let's do a roll call then.
Okay. Mr. Culver?
Yes.
Mr. Cussero?
Yes.
Ms. Redman?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Mr. Tinlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six is public discussion, items that are not on the agenda. And I don't see anyone from the public here. Nope, not yet. Almost. We will close public discussion and move on to master plan discussion.
Hello. I am getting over the cold that I had last week, so my voice is kind of ragged tonight, so just apologize if my... It's just tougher to listen to me than usual. So I got two things to do tonight. One is I want to finish the summary of the public input that we received, because we did the first half, and we didn't get to the second half last meeting, so I'm going to do that first, and then we are going to have a little goal-setting discussion that's based on the handout that was given to you tonight. So, first things first, let's get this up on the screen and go through the input. And... Okay, so, uh, like I said, we already discussed kind of the first half of this, and the second half begins with the budgeting question that we had on the survey. So we allowed respondents to prioritize funding for six hypothetical public initiatives. They had a thousand points to distribute. We had four hundred three total votes for various projects there, and, um, on average, people distributed money to about four point four projects. So most people didn't necessarily distribute money to all of them, but they had their, uh, their kind of favorites. So, in order to fund something at the max, you would have given all thousand of your points to that project, and nobody did that. Nobody said, okay, all thousand of my points are going to one project. Everybody spread it out between at least a couple. And, for the most part, people also didn't give the minimum, which was a hundred, to a project. They either threw quite a bit at it, or they didn't throw anything at it. So, uh, when we look at kind of what got funded the most overall, stormwater management improvements, almost everybody put something toward that. That ninety-seven point eight percent of respondents put something toward that. And road maintenance and repair was number two, improved park and recreation facilities was number three, upgrades to public safety facilities and equipment was, uh, number four, improvements to infrastructure for biking and walking was number five, and then community art projects was number six. So, I don't know that it's necessarily a surprising order of priorities. I think the flooding in the roads, I, it's kind of, it's what everybody sees every day, and what people or have one traumatic experience with, right? So I think it kind of looms large in people's minds, and it is things that people want fixed, and, you know, there's a reason it's one of the modules for our master plan, right? This is just a little information on how it was, uh, distributed. We'll get this in your hands, too, so you can see it in a little more detail. We had a map question that also asked us to locate, you know, point out the locations of problems, so people were given kind of four categories, and then they could leave a comment along with their dot on the map. So the red is road in poor condition. You can see a couple of, um, concentrations there, particularly up in the northern part of town, along School Street. Definitely a lot of, uh, people putting dots on the map up there. We had, blue was flooding, so places where people have experienced flooding, and it's really spread around the community. There's even one right in the heart of downtown. But the neighborhood up around the park has the biggest concentration of reported problems. Pink, with the two little wrenches, is a missing sidewalk, so that is primarily concentrated along Maple and Crooks Road. A lot of you can probably picture in your minds where these dots are, because you've driven past it a lot, and you can see there's no sidewalk there, and there's a few gaps along those roads. And then yellow is where the sidewalk needs, you know, urgent repair. And only a few people marked those places, but we've got a couple of locations that we can report to the DPW and let them know that they need some attention there. Uh, we did have that question about where people park when they park downtown, and generally speaking, I don't know that this is too surprising. We've got large concentrations in the two primary lots north of Fourteen Mile Road, considerably less in the lots and south of Fourteen Mile Road, and then there's a few kind of scattered spots further down Main Street, where people might be putting their car on the street. But generally speaking, people were parking, you know, as close as they can to the biggest concentrations of businesses. It's not, it's not very surprising. We had a few questions about biking and walking, so this one talked about, um, bike lanes and how, what would make people feel most comfortable, or what they thought would lead people to use them the most, and, um... The results that we got back showed that barrier-protected bike lanes are the things that people trust the most to keep them safe, which is not surprising, because the more separation you have from automobiles, the safer you are. It's really, it's pretty logical. We did have, you know, quite a large number of people who also, um, were willing to look at a little less protection, some lane striping and vertical posts, you know, like with reflectors on them, that you've seen around, was enough for some people, and a few people were fine with an unprotected bike lane as well. But generally speaking, people want as much protection and separation as possible. So we had, uh, another map that we allowed people to put dots on and give us some, some feedback. Red is a safety concern, so, for instance, you can see there is a concentration down here near where Washington comes into Fourteen Mile, and there were comments associated with each of those, and they were all basically saying, you know, people don't really know how to behave around the Hawk signal, drivers and pedestrians alike, and there were some worries that that was creating, um, problems. You have potentially people going to school crossing Fourteen Mile in that location, so that's something that we need to think about. You know, perhaps even some signage, just telling people how to use the Hawk signal, what it actually means, because, um, you know, a lot of people just aren't familiar with that kind of signal, and it's not really part of your driver ed, or hasn't historically been part of driver ed. So just understanding that, you know, what, what it means when it's blinking yellow, what it means when it's blinking red, what it means when it's solid red, in terms of what a driver is supposed to be doing, and then what the pedestrian can expect from the driver.
We haven't had any accidents at those, right, aside from when, when the one guy ran over the one?
Yeah, no, the one guy hit the post, but we haven't had any vehicle, uh, person accidents at any of them at this point, and we'd like to keep it that way.
Has that one been repaired as of yet?
Uh, the last update that I had was from the city engineer, and I, we have to work with the county on that.
Yeah.
And as far as I know, everything's been approved. They're waiting for, I think they're waiting for a par or something.
Yeah, the county's taken some time to review that, and they just wrapped up to say, we get the green light, so we're preparing the bid documents.
Okay. Thanks.
So that'll be fixed soon. So a few other comments. There are a couple of intersections within neighborhoods. We got pretty good responses from the northwestern quadrant of the city, and a couple of those inner neighborhood intersections, there were comments about signage, either there's like two-stop signs where people were thinking maybe there should be four, or there's a problem with the viewing angle, where people felt like it wasn't easy enough to see who might be coming, particularly on the sidewalk. The ones on, um, North Main there are just about crossing North Main, and how there's a lot of distance between lights, and, um, you know, it's supposed to be a twenty-five mile an hour zone, but it's four lanes and wide and flat, and everybody goes faster than twenty-five. Uh, the, the yellow lock indicates where people would like to see some sort of bike parking, and some of those were related to, um, you know, visiting or being employed at a given destination. You know, others were, um, you know, I want to be able to ride my bike downtown and lock it up somewhere secure where, while I'm, you know, walking around and shopping. And then, uh, we let people point out, um, problem crossings with the darker yellow there. That one up by Maple looks particularly harrowing. It's, it's not really close to any intersections, and it, I just, uh, I really hope there aren't a lot of people crossing the road there, but, um, someone did point it out. And purple was just some other comments. And we can share the text of those comments with you. We did ask about multifamily housing, where people generally thought it would be most appropriate. Long major roads really is, um, is the leader there. Fourteen Mile kind of led the, the various roads that we asked about, and then in and around downtown was number three. We asked people to kind of rank, um, the various types. People were pretty open to the mixed-use idea, you know, units above commercial. The cottage court concept that we've shared had some support as well, as kind of like an infill idea. You know, I, I think it's kind of appealing because it's, it's usually ranch homes and kind of low-impact. Duplexes also kind of got, got a decent amount of support. The others were kind of a mixed reaction, I would say. We did ask about what amenities people would want to see if they were to rent a multifamily unit, and, you know, some sort of balcony or private space, private patio space led the, uh, the list of amenities, and then an outdoor, recreational outdoor space was number two. This thing keeps getting in my way. Storage unit space was also viewed as pretty important. And then gap, community gathering space. And that's actually it. That's all the questions that we had on the survey. If anybody's got any, uh, questions or comments before we move on to the exercise.
You're going to share the power, that PowerPoint?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
I will share that with you.
Do you, Joe, do you share that with just the commission, or does, does the public have access to those things? I've looked back at prior minutes and noticed that some of our packets don't have, like, like, all the things that we see at, at the meetings? Is that something...
Yeah, so the idea with this stuff is to share the summary on the master plan website.
Okay.
So it's, you know, we, we asked, and here's what you told us, and just give people the chance to kind of go through the results and see for themselves what people said.
So it won't be in our, our packet? It'll just be on the website?
It'll be on the website, yeah.
Okay.
Hey, we don't do a public hearing before we send it on to council?
Oh, yeah, that's, actually, it's required by statute, but we would do it anyway, but, um, yes, that is required. I think we will try to do some sort of public workshop before that, just to get peoples, give people a chance to, uh, let us know what they think about where we landed on all this.
And when you say public workshop, you mean at one of our meetings, or like outside...
Most likely prior to one of your meetings, I would say that. We would probably try to target a time of day that straddled, um, the early to mid-evening and the late afternoon, to give people kind of a range of times where they could show up and check things out. And also, put it online as well, so that if you can't show up, you can at least give us your two cents some other way.
So, yeah, because I was going to say, there's not a lot of opportunity, unless all of us can make it to that workshop, to interact with residents and kind of get our feedback, and I know sometimes, like, if it's just you there, you don't have, you know, um, how, how far in advance, I guess, would you schedule that so that, so, you know, we have an opportunity, and do we have an opportunity to, to attend and kind of be there as a commission, or is that something that only two of us can show up, otherwise we're at quorum, or how do we work that?
Well, as long as you notice the meeting as, as a public meeting, all of you can be there.
Okay.
It doesn't, yeah, the, the quorum question is taken care of by letting people know that we're having a public meeting, and, and telling them what its purpose is. This is a forum where people are able to view the recommendations of the master plan and respond to them. And then if, you know, five or six of you show up, or all nine of you show up, then we're covered.
And that doesn't have to be broadcasted for it to be a public in...
Uh, no, it doesn't. We could choose to try to figure out how to broadcast some kind of a...
It would be awkward, right?
It would be a little weird, but it does not have to be broadcasted.
Okay.
And then, you know, after that meeting, or that forum, we would kind of summarize what we heard, let you know, and then see if we make, want to make any changes at the next meeting to the draft that we've come up with.
And there's no date set yet for that?
No, no. That's something that we'll do a month in advance. We want to give you a chance to review things, you know, first and everything before we move to that point, because you've got to be comfortable with it before we go and say, or, you know, go and start asking people, you know, to respond to the draft. You've got to, as a commission, be comfortable with it, so. We got to get to that point first, and then we can move on to the, um, the, uh, public response, and then ultimately distribution of the draft.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Do you have a, a goal in mind of a date that, like, you'd like to have it by June, or...
Yeah, I'd like, well, I'd like to do that in the second half of May, if possible, and then, um, be reviewing the draft in April.
The draft prior to that? Prior to the meeting?
Well, we would review the draft as a commission at the meetings.
But I meant prior to the public. You're saying the draft?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, I didn't know if you meant after that, okay.
Exactly, yeah. And then May, the May would be the public thing, and then we can get to council to distribute the draft in June.
Perfect. Thank you.
So, um, uh, close the computer, and move on to this handout that I handed out earlier tonight. So, we've discussed all the various modules of the plan, and really, our next step is to establish our, our goals for each of those modules. And once we've done that, we can kind of write the draft and provide it to you for your review. So what I've done here is I've kind of taken a stab at working up some goals for the modules that we've discussed. There's some notes on a couple of them, and giving you a chance to tell me if I landed in the right space, basically, in terms of what you're trying to accomplish with each of these. Now, goals are supposed to be kind of high-level. They're not necessarily actions you would take. They sort of suggest actions that you might take. What we'll do with these, if we're happy with them by the end of the evening, is we would develop a set of objectives to go along with each one of them that's more action-oriented. Now, to address a couple of them right off, um, we have to gain some clarity about the current situation with the school sites before we get too far with that. I am, I don't know, I've heard various things, and I'm trying to kind of pin down exactly what's going on there, so we're not going to discuss that one tonight. And then the sustainability and resiliency, that's been in the draft process with the Clausen Naturally Committee. They are meeting tomorrow evening to review the draft of that chapter. If they are happy with it at that point, it will be forwarded to the Planning Commission for your review, and, um, you can, of course, then make any suggestions or modifications at that point, based on, uh, you know, your own ideas about the Sustainability and Resiliency Plan, but there are eight goals that are housed under the Sustainability and Resiliency Plan. That is down from fourteen that were included in the sustainability framework. The decision was taken by the Clausen Naturally Group to try to consolidate things and make it a little bit more manageable with a set of eight goals that sort of matches up with the, um, the topic areas that were established in the framework. But you should see that, unless there's a surprise tomorrow, and we've got to make some major revisions, you should see that at your next meeting, that, or prior to your next meeting. You should receive a draft in your next packet of that chapter. So with that explained, why don't we start with Module One, Infrastructure. I have brought a kind of pad here that if we got to write things down. I get so sick of pointing and clicking and looking at a computer screen. I'd rather just write it down so you can all see it real big, and, um... But I've started off the infrastructure by kind of breaking it down into three category, subcategories, and then suggesting four, uh, starting points for, for, for the goals. So we talk about roads first. So my first suggested goal is to have well-maintained roads that facilitate the smooth movement of traffic through and about the city, which I think is pretty basic, but nevertheless, it's really kind of what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to accomplish that. And then we're also looking for the design of roads and streets in Clausen to be appropriate for the context of the right-of-way. And that can speak to a lot of different things, so, um, for instance, if we're talking about North Main and the possibility of putting parking in one of those lanes, and, um, you know, changing the overall character of that road, that would fall under that goal. But also, if we were talking about, you know, doing some sort of traffic calming to try to slow down traffic on Elmwood, that would also fall under that goal. And, you know, to the extent that we control the roads on our periphery, which we don't have full control of most of them, but, um, you know, when we think about Crooks Road and Maple Road, we have to understand that those are regional roads, and that they're made to move people through, and they do have things that front directly on them that people will be visiting, but that's their function, their primary function, so they're not going to be like a pleasant neighborhood street necessarily. So that's what I'm trying to get at with that second goal, and I, I guess I'll take reactions to that, if you have any, or questions, and then if anybody thinks that maybe something needs to go in a different direction, or if there's something that's been missed here, certainly feel free to, uh, say that now as well.
So did I understand that you, your suggestion two means that you're encompassing traffic, like, calming?
Yeah, because we're talking about the design of roads and streets being context-appropriate, so, yeah, traffic calming would fall under that, and I think that it would be probably one or two of the objectives under that goal would speak directly to... would speak directly to traffic calming, uh, on neighborhood streets.
On neighborhood streets.
Are, are we gonna be discussing, like, the, the particulars of, like, where the traffic calming should occur, or just the idea of implementing some type of traffic calming?
We can make suggestions if we think that there are high priority areas for traffic calming, definitely, yeah.
Well, yeah, 'cause, I mean, how, how will the next commission in the future know our intent to that? Um, and someone could misapply that and do with it what they will. Um, so I would like to be kind of explicit in, I, I guess, I don't know if we talk, I mean, I know we talked a lot about traffic calming, but we, as a body, I don't feel like have talked, um, specifically about certain areas, although, maybe I'm recalling wrong, I don't know, have we talked about Elmwood specifically?
I mean, I know some things did come up in discussion, but we haven't necessarily, like, locked down a list of locations or anything like that.
Okay.
Excuse me.
What about safety, Joe?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't, I mean, I, I'm thinking of safety to residents' own automobiles, right? I mean, we wanna promote travel in the city on roads that are not damaging to residents' vehicles. Also, safety to pedestrians, safety to, to bicyclists, right? But, but that, I, I'm just, I'm wondering where that would fall, those things, right?
Sure. So I think, um, the word itself doesn't appear there, but I think that, uh, number two could be modified to include it, uh, because that's really one of the goals of the road design, would be greater safety. Um, and the non-motorized goal does speak to safety, um, so I think, uh, you know, maybe between the two of those, if we include the word.
'Cause if we go to objectives underneath there, I, I'm just not sure where we'd put the objective around safety, right? So, yeah, maybe we should do that.
Can I piggyback off that, especially, um, and I know, I see in Module Two, you don't wanna discuss specifically school sites, but I think it's something that's pretty apparent, that with the schools, um, um, you know, all relocating, that safety is something that maybe we could detail and point out, specific areas that might need to, um, you know, have a heightened, um, or a restructuring of what safety means in those areas, since there are gonna be so many walkers?
Oh, absolutely. I think that, um, particularly, um, North Main, it's kind of taken on a whole different character with everything being concentrated in that one school area. I think it's a major target for traffic calming, uh, in the future, because, I mean, you think about, you've got all these students at this school, you've got Main Street, and then you've got the library. And Main Street's between those students and the library at the end of the school day, and, um, you know, I, you don't do everything at the library, you know, for your research that you used to necessarily, but nevertheless, students use the library a lot.
Yeah.
So that, to me, is like a major focal point, where you wanna, you wanna make sure that kids crossing North Main are gonna be in, in good shape, and, you know, especially now that they're younger than middle schoolers, you know, a, a lot of them anyway will be, um, that becomes even more important.
Well, and I feel like, not just North Main, but even in the neighborhood behind the school, you know, I, my middle schooler picking her up, not all cars stop for those kids, and, um, that makes me nervous already.
Sure, yeah.
So, so outside of just North Main, just, I don't know how, um, what that looks like, and I'm sure there's been studies or ways to make that safe. I don't know if the school's already, um, working on a plan in that way. I did send them, there is grants out there for that, um, but, uh, maybe getting some advice from the school on that would be helpful.
Yeah, we can see if they have a plan. Um, no, but yeah, in terms of thinking about actions, and, and I, I'm absolutely open to talking about actions and objectives that might fall under these goals tonight. If you, if you've got them in your head, just go ahead and say them. But, uh, yeah, I, that's, that's definitely a hundred percent the kind of thinking we should be, uh, having around safety. Um, and of course, you know, we think about other community facilities, you know, Claussen City Park and, um, you know, even like the churches that are on the edges of neighborhoods that people might be walking to from within the neighborhoods. Um, these are all places that, you know, we want people to be safe when they're walking around them. And that, you know, some of those are voting precincts and things, so there's other times when people might be walking to them as well.
Excuse me one second, Joe. Can I, can I help you?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm guessing that we're past Section Six in public discussion, but I, I was just coming in for a voting, so I saw that you're having a meeting. Would it be okay if I bring something up? I, I apologize, I, I don't mean to interrupt your agenda. If not, it's fine.
Is there, is there be a good break time, that he can listen to what we're doing right now?
That's up to the chair, if you wanna, um, open the public comment. Um, I can step aside for a second.
How about, how about if I give you about three minutes right now?
Oh, sure.
You come up and give us your name and address and...
Sounds good.
Right now.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
Um, I'm just, I'm sorry, I haven't been to one of these in a long time. Hi, uh, there we go. Uh, so, my name is Nathaniel Bala, I live on, uh, four seventy East Elmwood Ave. Um, I've been a resident here for about a little over two years, I think, now. Um, so just a couple of things, I, just as a side note, um, I like living here. It's just really nice little town, and, I mean, I, I, not, not to try to pander to anything, but it's, it's just, I like the vibe of it. I mean, not to use too, um, you know, informal, I guess, uh, description of it, but I really like the city, and I also like the community overall, just as a side note, you know, just for what it's worth. Um, a minor thing, um, I go on Main Street a lot, from particularly to Noble Fish. Um, I noticed that, just in general on Main Street, there's just a lot of garbage. Um, I, like, to the point where I just, like, pick it up and throw it out myself, but, I mean, I have a job and a life, I can't just do that all day. Um, I noticed that most of the time the trashcans are full. Um, I know it sounds like a kind of a minor thing, but I don't know if it's possible to maybe look into just maybe doubling the frequency which they're taking out.
That's, that's been on the city's radar for a while now.
Okay, yeah, 'cause I, I mean, I've noticed, like, it's not that people just throw things on the street, it's that most of the time the trashcans are full.
Right.
And it's not reasonable to rely on people's patience to just, you know, carry everything in bags and try to find appropriate trash receptacles when they're just walking whenever. Um, the other thing too is that, I'm not the best with road names, but when you go out here, right, that street, um, I, and I, I know I'm, I'm, I should probably know it, um, but that main street, there's a, actually by the library, there's like a, kind of a long walking path. I've walked there, tons of people run there and stuff. I see a lot of trash there too, and I feel like if we put, like, literally one trashcan kind of along that way, like, people wouldn't have to throw their trash out, because there's a really long, long stretch of area where there's just really no garbage, and I even, like, picked up trash, like, have a little bag with me, and I just keep it with me, and at my house, I throw it out. I feel like if we put something there, it might be really helpful, and I think from a cost perspective, it wouldn't really burden us too much. Um, oh, and with regards to that, um, I think the comment made on the, uh, uh, schools, uh, sorry, um, elementary kids' schools or middle schoolers, uh, crossing, something that, i- it might be kind of a low-tech idea, but if we get, like, a crosswalk guard for when they're, usually, like, kids don't really hang out schools that much these days, they either wanna go home or have after-school activities. So it might be as simple enough, you're gonna be laughing, having someone from the school or someone from the community volunteer for, like, an hour while that window of time, just to make sure that, the presence of a crosswalk guard is typically enough for most people to stop, because most of the time, people are busy, or they're, for lack of a better term, they're just kinda, you know...
We've had them in town before, I think it's pretty much a voluntary position.
Yeah, yeah, and, I mean, maybe if there's an issue with getting volunteers, maybe like a small little, I don't know, someone with extra time on their hands, maybe older, just, you know, standing there with little signs. Um, I feel like, again, a lot of people, their attention span has dropped so much, and I see a lot of people, not narking at anyone, but honestly, on their phones, you're gonna be laughing, it might just be as simple as people not paying attention. Even some of our own residents, unfortunately, again, I'm not, not like I have a list of names, but I'm just saying in general. Um, so, I think that, even if you have to, like, you know, like, I don't know, fifty bucks a week or a hundred bucks a week, someone, you know, hey, if you volunteer, we'll give you, I don't know, like, a gift card to one of the local, you know, something like that, nothing crazy. Um, that might provide enough of an incentive to have consistent stream of volunteers that way, again, 'cause it's really only an hour, kids get out of school, and if you have that crossguard, more often than not, that's more than enough for them to get to where they need to go, um, and they're good. Sorry, I'm just gonna think if there's one last thing, and then after that, I, I'm kind of done with ideas. Um, oh, one thing, um, and I, I know I'm just kind of coming out of nowhere, I'm sorry, I, um, I know that plans in general, they take a long time to kind of put together. I really love the parking on Main Street. I think pretty much everyone loves how the parking is structured, the fact that, 'cause I go to Royal Oak, uh, for work a lot, and those meter things are just, a lot of people don't like them. Um, and the fact is that it's very easy to get in and out of a lot of those big parking spots. They accommodate a lot of different kind of vehicles, 'cause sometimes, street parking, depending on how you partition it, certain types of vehicles, not that they take up all the space, or they take up, oh, sorry, overwhelming amount of space, but they make it difficult for other drivers to get in the way they're parked. And what I found is people nowadays, they're not as, you're gonna be laughing, they're not as good as parking as they used to be. So it might actually kind of intimidate people for, oh, can I make that spot, especially if they're coming off, like, Main Street and their car's coming? I have a small car, so I can maneuver around, and I've been driving for a while, but I don't know if a lot of people could, you know, if you tighten those spots to try to put in more, I'm just saying. I don't know if that's on the agenda, I don't know if there's a plan, I just wanna give you general feedback. It might create difficulties for people to get in and out, but I think overall, if we, you know, just take care of the trash, um, oh, there's one more thing about the safety thing with sidewalk, uh, people crossing and stuff on Main Street. So on, you guys know where Noble Fish is, right? Like, that general parking lot?
Yep.
Um, there's, like, this gap where typically people, I wouldn't say jaywalk, but there's kind of no, like, there's that little, like, island or barrier. Um, I don't know if we have lights there or not, but maybe if we put some more signs or just maybe put, like, a crosswalk, just something there, but...
That's all being looked at by the traffic and safety board in town.
Okay, cool. But, yeah, but beyond that, I think, um, for the most part, the, I think the roads are all right, but they are a little rough. I don't know if maybe we can, like, once in a while, just get some dry patch. I don't know how long that lasts, but I noticed that some parts of the road are just a little rough, but beyond that, I think things are pretty good. But, um, all the same, thank you for your time. I'm gonna scamper off, 'cause I kind of don't really have anything else on my mind at the moment, but thanks for hearing me out, though.
Same for you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I will close public comment again.
So, Joe, back to, back to, I was, I had a question in mind before we diverted. Um, you closed public comment, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, has any, has anybody ever brought up the prospect of, like, having more paved sidewalks in an area where people and pedestrians and families aren't having to constantly stop and cross streets, so often, like, in the park area? Like, I, I don't know if that's just me, but I've...
What difference for bicycles or?
Bicycles, rollerbladers, people to just have, uh, you know, there's a lot of parks that have, like, a circle area where you can, you know, I know that they have the running track, but, um, where you could take your kid where they wanna learn to ride a bike, and you don't have to stop every, I don't know, five houses per street. I don't know if that's ever been brought up at, at all, or maybe it's just me that thinks that'd be really nice.
Are you saying in lieu of the woodchips?
I, I mean, I don't want to offend any runners.
You're gonna upset the runners.
I, I don't want to. I mean, I would say yes, but I also know that runners probably...
I think if you got a bike, you should be on the side streets, you're on the main streets and...
Yeah, but not with kids, and not with rollerblades, it might be a really...
People running down the sidewalk all the time too, but, you know...
Yeah. Okay, well, maybe it's not a good idea, but I thought I, you know, I was just putting it out there. Jeez, tough crowd.
You're gonna get all the walkers in town showing up here.
Um, okay, well, I guess, um, let's, let's talk about this non-motorized, uh, goal here. Um, so my, my suggestion for a goal was Claussen should be a safe, inviting place for people of all abilities to traverse without the aid of a motor vehicle. So, kind of regardless of why you're traversing it, if you're doing it recreationally, or to actually run an errand or something, you should be able to get around. Um, I think, so in American culture, we have an association of the automobile with freedom, but for a lot of people, that association is not a true association, because they can't drive for whatever reason or another, they're legally blind, they don't have the use of their legs. For, for those people, living in a place where you need a car to get everywhere is actually extremely limiting, it's kind of the opposite of freedom. So if we can have a place where, yes, people can get around in their cars easily and without, you know, damaging them in some giant pothole, uh, but it's also a place where everyone can get around, you know, without one, um, then we are creating an equitable, you know, place to live. Um, so, I don't know if there are any thoughts about that one, um, but I thought that kind of captured the overall, what we're trying to do with the non-motorized, uh, infrastructure.
I think our current ordinance is, I think, frowned on people riding their bikes on the sidewalks. My belief was that we actually wanted people on side streets and on the street, but not on the sidewalks, which doesn't make sense to me. If I'm gonna ride my bike, I'm gonna ride on the sidewalk.
Is that just downtown, or you mean throughout the city?
Just, just throughout the city, you know.
Oh, I always ride on the sidewalk. Who would they want, they really, really?
I think the ordinance reads that you're not supposed to ride, well, especially in the down, heart of downtown, they don't want people...
Yeah, the heart of downtown and other signs.
They don't want you riding your bicycle by the outside restaurants.
I could understand that with shopping, yeah.
That made sense, everybody's got an outside patio, you don't want a bike flying by.
Don't do it.
So they should actually stop and wa, it's like our car show, we, we make them stop and walk their bike through the car show, you don't want any damage done with it.
Yep.
But I think the ordinance says that they, they don't really want them.
I tell my kids not to ride in the streets, so, I don't know, break the law, guys.
A twelve-year-old kid riding their bike on the sidewalk is probably not gonna get a ticket.
Yeah, I hope not.
So, Joe, quick question, it's kind of like, uh, taking a step back. Are these, I guess, six modules gonna replace the current eight goals in their entirety? 'Cause I know when we first started talking, it's like, you know, we, we're looking at the previous master plan, it doesn't need to be revised, or is it gonna be completely replaced with this? Because, to your point, just on the non-motorized vehicle, and we just had somebody from the public speak about safety, crossing streets and things like that, this needs to be somewhere. Uh, but I'm just curious, 'cause there's a lot more information in the current master plan. So what's your perspective on building this up?
I think this is additive, um...
Like, will we be reviewing the, the current, I'll call it current master plan, plus this, and, and seeing where there's redundancies, or are we planning on this kind of replacing that?
Yeah, I mean, in some cases, the, the new goal might simply, you know, replace the old goal, and in other cases, it will be additive. So I think we can do a, a, kind of a, um, comparison for you.
Okay.
Of that, once we've kind of settled on this stuff.
Yeah, and, and I'm saying that because I, I think that it's critical to have this in the master plan. I just don't know where it's gonna fall, and I want it to be as inclusive as it has been previously, or obviously more detailed in terms of the points you just made around safety, the ability to get around downtown for all people, so, okay, thank you, that helps.
Sure. Uh, the last infrastructure, uh, suggested goal I had was improve the management of stormwater throughout Claussen and reduce future flooding events. Um, I mean, obviously, that's very high level, but that, it is a goal, so, um, that's really what we're trying to do. I started out with the word eliminate, um, future flooding events, but you really shouldn't make promises you can't keep. So, um, we really are looking at reduction, um, and if you can reduce to zero, then, you know, that's ultimately the, what you wanna do, but, um, you know, any, any amount of reduction is going to be a positive thing, and it just may that be that over the long term, we get more reduction than we do in the short term.
And a lot of that is covered by ordinance, right? Uh, like, if we're, we're putting these apartment buildings around town now.
Sure, yep.
Isn't it mandatory that they put in retention?
It is now, yeah.
They have to hold the water for a length of time, it releases slower.
Lodges and sites don't have that.
Yeah, so, that's, that's the best option, I think, that we can do as a city, you know?
Yeah, it's gonna be the, probably the most impactful.
Yeah.
At this point.
Well, and who's, who sets the, I think I asked you this before, but who sets the regulation on the hundred-year versus two-hundred-year retaining system?
It's the county.
It's the county that sets that, as, um, is, is it like a building code essentially? Like, is it... Like, is it part of like?
It's part of the county and, uh, stormwater standards, um, and then our engineer applies those standards, uh, as his standards of review.
And is, does it go up when you have more, more density there, like more people per square foot? Does it?
People doesn't matter, the lot coverage matters. So, the amount of the lot that you're covering, uh, is really what affects how the stormwater moves on the site. So, that's, that's what all the standards are based on, is how much of this site is paved, basically.
How much of it's paved? Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, and the building counts as paving.
Right.
Uh, cause that's, that's lot coverage, that's, you know, that's rain that's not going straight into the soil, so.
So we can't stop in, put a little higher of a qualification on that at all?
I mean, uh, there are communities that have written their own stormwater standards, um, in southeast Michigan, but, uh, most of them, you know, are larger communities. Um, you know, the, the, the new county standards are actually extremely strict. So, um, to go beyond them, I think might actually disincentivize people from doing things in the city. Um, as it is, the new stormwater standards that the county has come out with are, and some of them are still being refined, but the ones that are enforced are, they're strong standards, they're very, um, rigorous.
And they set a level of how much that can be released within a certain amount of time when there's rain, right?
Yeah, exactly. So they, they tell you how much you're supposed to be able to retain on-site, and then they limit the, um, the, uh, release speed of that water. Um, and that, I think that actually depends on like what part of the, um, drain shed or water system you're on, um, cause different parts of it have different capacities for absorption and things like that, but, um...
And, um, is there, is there already, I'm sure that someone's already talked about it, but like, the maintenance of those, once they're under a building and you think about your gutters getting clogged and things like that, is there already people that know how to maintain and clean out and do all that stuff?
So there's, uh, um, every one of those systems will have a cleanout, um, and that's basically, cause over time, they'll silt up and things. Uh, so, you have to be able to get in there with like a vector truck and...
Okay, and do we have a standard for how often that needs to happen?
I don't think so. Uh, locally, we don't, I don't know that the stormwater standards do. Um, I, I don't know, I would have to look. Um, I'm, I'm not sure that there's a frequency requirement for that.
It might be helpful for us to think. I'm, I mean, I'd imagine maybe it's like a five-year, every five year or something like that, but still to have that in place so that people are already knowing what to expect. Um, I don't know.
My, my, I, if I had to sus, have a suspicion about it, I would think it's probably when the effectiveness of the system starts to decline is probably when it's usually done. Um, but, um...
How does one determine that?
When your basement starts taking on water.
Yeah, well, we, we, bur baths, you know?
When the parking lot's full of water, is it? I mean, cause the basements will always flood, our basement, so, I mean, in...
Uh, yeah, I mean, in, 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 in places like here in Berkeley where I live, yeah, there's always gonna be problems with flooding, cause you have a high water table, swamps were filled and houses were built there.
Right.
You're gonna have basement problems.
Yeah.
It's just, it's just gonna happen.
It will.
To be clear, yeah, this is, this is for commercial application.
Oh, I know, but if, if we're counting on, I mean, I'm just wondering how, what triggers that, how they know. So it, I guess it makes sense if the parking lot's retaining water instead of their storm sewer, storm drain, sorry, not sewer. But, um, I was just curious in, in if we have an ordinance that requires them to go in there and say, hey, your parking lot's holding a bunch of water right now, you need to, you know, service your retain, retention tank or whatever, because if we don't have an ordinance to do it, then we all know that it'll end up at court and we won't have any mechanism, essentially.
I think there is an ordinance of, not specific, but something about like, um, shedding stormwater on other people's properties.
Yeah, you, you're not allowed to exceed what's called the agricultural runoff rate, and, uh, please don't ask me to explain what that is. But, um, the, if you are exceeding that, then yes, you, you, you can be enforced upon, and then you're gonna have to do something with your retention system. Um, you know, in a lot of other communities where there's more space, you have retention ponds, and like the big thing with those is they get choked full of weeds and fragmities and all kinds of other stuff, and they have to be cleaned out. And, you know, I work in some, for some cities where the engineering department's always out there saying, clean out your pond, because right now, it's not being effective.
And do they have an ordinance that enforces that in those cities, that they kind of?
I think they, they rely on that agricultural runoff rate, and they're basically telling people like, you're, you're gonna get to the point where you're not meeting that standard if you don't clean out your pond.
Okay.
Uh, but I can look up a little bit more information about that.
Okay.
So, now, uh, under the, the sewer and sewer, is there anything else that is on anyone's mind that we should be trying to accomplish here in terms of a goal? Absolutely.
Just for all of your awareness, real quick. So at six o'clock today, this, uh, city council on a budget workshop related to capital improvement plans, where the DPW at engineering department had a presentation on current infrastructure and CIP requests for, uh, this upcoming fiscal year. But as part of that presentation, there was a really good overview of our entire infrastructure as a whole, that I would really entertain all of you to, to watch that meeting, which will be on YouTube later. It'll probably be available today, uh, and not just you, but I think every resident would really learn about that, because not only do we just learn about what we need, we also learn about, you know, how many miles of road and how many, many miles of water main, and the five-hundred-and-ninety-some fire hydrants we have. It's all stuff that the city maintains. And so when thinking and talking about infrastructure as a whole, um, you know, I think it's very educational for everyone to, to take a look at that. I think the presentation, uh, not including questions, was about an hour long. So, just some additional information for everyone to think about if, if they would like.
Thanks. I would, oh, go ahead. No, I was gonna actually defer to you, Josh, since you're, I believe you're still on the sustainability committee.
And I think there'll be some overlap between module four as well, but, you know, to, a, a couple of points. If I was to expand and talk about objectives, right, I think we talked about, you know, detention basins, we have some ordinances in place to maintain some of that, but also to look at green space and maybe permeable pavement and other material would be, you know, good objectives to kind of flesh out further for that one. And then going beyond in the infrastructure module overall, I was curious, your thoughts on like electrical grids, right? So we used to have a lot of people without power. Um, I think that there's been work done, and I know there's kind of this, will we really move towards EVs in a, in a large capacity or not, but you know, like we talk about this, for a new build, having like the ability to have charging stations and things that'll be necessary in the future possibly.
Sure.
So I was thinking, electrical might be something to add into the infrastructure. And then, I don't know if it goes too far, but water quality, right? So ma, like when you think about, you know, lead pipes around towns and talking about building out, you know, and replacing old lines. So I think those are two that I want to explore further and see if they make sense for this module as well. And we have to think about this in a sense of how will this master plan help guide us in the future? And so I don't know how much control we have versus, you know, what things are kind of beyond our control. So, curious to your perspective on that.
So, uh, let's take the last one first, water quality. Um, so that's a really interesting one. So, um, I know the city does do some incremental amortization of lead water infrastructure. So, um, there've been a few projects where someone's done some work, and the engineering department has required them to replace a lead service line with a new PVC line. Um, so I think that over time, we're in a situation where we have less and less lead in our water system. And of course, it's treated, um, but, the less lead you have, the less need there is to treat ultimately. Uh, so yes, I think that over time, uh, reducing the, uh, the amount of, I don't wanna say obsolete, but antiquated infrastructure that we have out there is definitely something we should be looking forward to. And I think that it does make sense to, to have a goal that's built around that. I'll have to think about exactly how that gets worded, but it is, it is a really, uh, interesting point, and I think we should do something about around it.
Joe, isn't there a state mandate though, that we had to do an assessment of all the lead pipes, uh, in the city?
Yes.
And we have to act a lot of timeframe, we have to replace them too?
Yeah, we do have to know where they are. I don't know what the timeframe might be.
They, they just did that at the plan, or at the city council meeting, I remember, and I, I actually think they're replacing them with copper, um, from what I...
It's like a five-year program, you have to have one-fifth of the town for the next five years.
One-fifth, right.
I don't know if they've actually started doing it yet. They're just still getting a list of who has lead and who doesn't.
Yeah, I know the city's been trying to get rid of them, kinda on a piecemeal basis for a long time now. Um, but yeah, if we're, if we've got a, a program in place, then I'll, I'll make sure we know about that.
Also, the sewer mains, I think they've been looked at over the years. I don't know if they have photographed them or how they deal that. Excuse me, the only time I hear about a water main is, is, is broken. And they're out in the weekend fixing it. That's, so that's all we've been doing is patching up bad stuff. I don't know if there's any way of looking at the stuff in advance and knowing that it's gonna fail first.
There is, there is a condition assessment. Um, and I know that, what was the stretch of main that was replaced collectively from last year?
Yeah, I don't know exactly where, where that was, it wasn't last year. Um, but a lot of the stuff that, that you guys are talking about right now is, is answered in that presentation, um, when it comes to age of our water main. And I think we, we talked about it, um, a few meetings ago in the fall, where, um, don't quote me on this number, I'm trying to remember from presentation. It's about forty percent of our water main is from the nineteen twenties to thirties. Um, and then another bulk of it is in the sixties. And we've actually seen, just due to the number of water main breaks that we've had, uh, most of the water main in the nineteen sixties has been the primary, primary main that we see problems with. And so, um, I don't have the full data, but we do have a list of, for the last fifty-five years of water main breaks where that was done, and, you know, how many we have per year. And again, it's all in that presentation, uh, which I can, I think I'm gonna try and get those slides and share that with you all as well, if, on top of that, if you don't have time to sit down and watch that presentation. And then, Cherokee Sarah, you mentioned the sewer, uh, cleaning. Uh, that is one project that we are proposing in the CIP, um, that we're actually hoping to maybe get started on sooner before the next fiscal year, is to have the entire city, uh, camera and scoped. And so, we had that back in two thousand and seven, but, uh, a lot has changed since then when it comes to the severity of storms in the last few years. And so that, that is a project we're looking to bid out. Um, roughly, that's a one-point-three-million-dollar project, which we wanna do before we start investing, um, a lot of our roads, because if we were going in fixing water main, fixing roads, and then to find out the sewers in bad shape.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're absolutely trying to avoid. So that's why that project is something, at least, if it's not in the next capital improvement plan, that's a good thing, cause it means we've got started on it before.
Right.
So, uh, again, a lot of that will be shared in that presentation. If there's more questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now. Um, but if I can't, they're probably gonna answer, be answered in that presentation.
Thanks, I'll watch the video tomorrow and...
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll see what I can do about getting those slides, and obviously you'll be missing a lot of the commentary from our DPW, you'll get more of the, the details, data and stats behind all the figures and kind of why we're going in said direction.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I think that's helpful for, I mean, cause really, I think we've talked about this before, like, when we look at the CIP, cause the planning commission's tasked with that, it's nice to align the CIP ideas with, with our points. So I, I do think it's something worth at least, hey, you know, next time we come around, we could check that box, I guess, you know, right? Cause it's already, um, I was, my suggestion and what I was gonna defer to Josh, and maybe it is better under four, but just, um, I know the sustainability was working on community outreach on certain things, but I, I feel like in terms of stormwater and, um, infrastructure, um, in just the city as a whole, to, to have that community outreach might be a good goal, but I don't know if that's like a goal for everything, or just one that we would put here, or where it's best fit.
There's probably an outreach objective under almost everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that it's, it's an action you can take, so I think it gets classed as an objective. But yeah, almost every one of these things has some outreach component to it that can be added.
Okay.
Uh, to address the electrical, um, we can, we can think about this. Um, it's tough because we don't really control it. We've gotta work with DTE, uh, but if we can articulate, um, a goal or an objective to DTE, that might help us move the ball forward. So, um, that's some, I have to go back and look at what we've got in the objectives for the sustainability, and see if we've maybe already covered it there, but if we haven't, then we can probably work something up. Um...
Yeah, I guess my, my thought was when you have spoken about, um, development of new properties or some of these larger units, having the ability to tap in.
Right.
For, for charging stations and things, even if it's not created initially, it's there, under the ground, prepared if we need it in the future.
Oh, and it'd be nice to have a...
You know, not, I don't know if that's an ordinance or something else, but you know, have that with new builds.
Right. Yeah. Can we get a project that maybe mitigates some of its grid demand for that by putting solar panels on the roof or something?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of like, you know, even when we do site plan reviews, it's, we suggest you use green materials, we suggest you have EV stations and plug, you know, plug in all that stuff. There's a lot of suggestions that probably get ignored if there's no value or...
Sure.
...return on investment to, to, you know, those who come in and build. So I was just trying to figure out ways that we could kinda outline that a little bit more clearly, or what tools we might have to, you know, mandate it where it makes sense.
Sure, yep.
Yeah, a lot of buildings will agree to put in a park bench or bicycle racks, cause they're not that expensive, not that hard to do.
Right.
For the amenities, but we can't, we can't really force them into putting in a permeable pavement area. I mean, we, they tried it with, uh, Mary Liz at Leon Lulu's, along that big empty lot, and she was gonna do that, and then she found out the water table's too high and the material's too costly, and it wouldn't perk through the soil anyway.
Yeah.
So I think that's a project still on hold, I believe.
Yeah, well, they were figuring out, uh, some sort of legal agreement for a while, and there was lots of loitering back and forth, so I think that's finally done now.
That's the thing about permeable soils and solar panels and windmills and things, but it's not always practical.
Right.
Well, and is there, who oversees all that, um, the, the wire, the internet wire stuff that goes in the ground? I know that they came and did that, and I've, when they were doing that, I know there was a house on Maple that they couldn't get to the sewer, they needed to replace like the sewer line, and there was all that cable in the way. And I didn't, does the city like think of that on a whole picture, in where they're laying that in terms of storm mains and drains and...
It's tough for the city to control, to control all of that, unfortunately.
The utilities.
Cause the utility kinda comes out and they put it like wherever they're gonna put it.
Wherever they want.
Just sorta, yeah, it's, there's not a lot of coordination between utilities.
Even the easement that they're given.
Yeah, exactly.
But the city gives them that easement, don't they?
So utility companies, they'll apply for a, for a right-of-way permit, just so we're aware of the work being done.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't know any specific like state law cases, but when it comes to their domain and, and ability, you know, we could say no to the permit, and then they're gonna do the work anyway, because the state tech effectively gives them the ability to do that. Um, and so, you know, we work with them as best we can to know what's going on, but I mean, there's a handful of times where they're doing work in the city that we don't know about, just because they're, they're doing their own thing and they have the ability to do that.
Well, and I'm just curious if that's a, we need to pull up a road or get to a, you know, lead pipes and things like that, and the city actually has to penetrate through some coax lines, or I don't know how that works. Do, do we take on the cost, or is that a utility thing?
So if they're digging up the, the road at any capacity, which we try to avoid to in any, any case.
Right.
Um, they'll be responsible for, for fixing that.
No, I mean, if the city has to make a repair and somehow damages that, or is it, is it in a, placed in a way that we can work around it?
It depends who's doing the work. So whenever utility companies are doing work in the city, they submit a bond. So if there is, uh, unsubstant, like unplanned damage to the road, that we do have a bond to collect to do some of that work. So if, say, consumers is doing a project, and they rip up a couple blocks of sidewalk, and they don't end up sending a contractor out to fix it, with their, uh, bond money that we collect, we'll fix it, and then when they ask for their bond back, we'll give them partial bond if that's what it was.
Okay.
Is that answering your question?
Not, not totally, but... Not, not totally, but it's okay.
Yeah. So whoever does the excavation, and if they are the ones that damaged the line, they're responsible to repair.
Right. Okay, I'm talking on the city side. If the city has to go in and repair a road, or repair a main, and those lines, all the cable lines that fill up, like, almost an easement, if they damage that, the city has to pay to repair that, the damaged?
It would depend on how much. I mean, there's much more space down there than you would, you'd think. And, you know, for example, there was, it wasn't DT or Consumers, but there is a project going on over on North Washington and Main Street. And because we have a project coming on North Washington soon, we told that contractor, hold off, wait till we're doing the work, that way it can be done in unison, or to, that way we're planning on the projects, that way we don't go in and do the road reconstruction on North Washington, and then they want to come in and put utilities in the ground, you know, six months after that project. So we do work with them when we know it's coming, and because we've got a lot of improvements in the near future, we'll be much more diligent with automatically saving and approve. And, you know, here's our timeline, how can you fit?
Right, okay. At least I know you're cognizant of all that stuff.
Yes, very, very cognizant.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm going to move it along to the parking module here. So I've got a couple of suggestions here. The first is ensure there's an adequate supply of parking throughout the city without creating an excess. And that's where the framework for evaluating what we're requiring, our parking requirements that we talked about earlier, comes in. So we really want to take a deep look and make sure that we're actually requiring the right amount of parking for any given use in the city. And then number two is, you know, where paved areas are found to be excessive, if we find areas of excessive pavement, you know, planning for their transition to more productive or environmentally constructive use is another thing that I thought that we should have in there. Because if we, if it turns out we've just got, like, a lot of extra pavement on a site, say, over in the West Gate or something, we'd like to be able to have some sort of framework for thinking about what should happen with that, you know? Can we maybe get rid of some of the pavement and put in something that would absorb more water? Is it okay for another building to go there and, you know, maybe fill out the space a little bit more? You know, the, the solutions might be different based on the space, but nevertheless, I think we should be thinking about it, you know? If we do turn out to have some kind of excess areas, what should happen with those?
I guess, counter to that, though, Joe, we also don't want to be in a position where we're driving vehicles to park on residential streets that are visiting businesses. That happens frequently in my area, for example, right? It gets quite annoying. Can't see around cars, you know?
Yep.
Trying to pull out, and it's like, ah, is there someone coming? You know, because the whole street is parked up.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, well, that's why the first goal emphasizes having an adequate supply. But, you know, there's a balance to strike there. And communities are trying all different ways of trying to strike that balance now. You have communities that are just straight up eliminating their parking minimums. You have communities that are, you know, evaluating what they've got. Others that are trying to move to, you know, different approaches that haven't really been tried before. So it's kind of a laboratory right now out there. And we have places we can watch to see if what they're doing works. And, you know, I mean, southeast Michigan, eliminating your parking requirements is just-
Yeah, I do think your statement, though, here, makes sense, both of them do. I mean, because there's a double-edged sword, both sides to the-
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and this is talking to the city as a whole, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Because every, every district's going to be different. It reminds me of every builder that comes in here and says, we want less parking for all our tenants. And then we're like, yeah, but then, you know, the city suffers from that, because they end up taking on all those parking spots. So I think that, I think that that really should be emphasized there. You know, the different zones should be considered. Not, you know, we can't say, oh, we've got plenty of, like you said, plenty of parking, you know, on the side streets, right? We want to make sure it's adequate, commercial, can adequately, you know, contain their commercial parking. So, yeah, driving down Royal Oak and Ferndale on a Sunday morning or Saturday night is, to me, terrifying. And, you know, in the, on the side streets, anyway, it's, yeah, you don't even have room to pass. I don't think that, that's what most residents want, anyway.
I mean, aside from, like, killing a lane on the main streets, in like, the downtown corridor, what other real options are there besides maybe acquiring vacant land for parking? I mean, we talk a lot about parking, but-
Yeah. Don't, don't have a lot of options.
Yeah, what are the options? Like, what's the solution?
Can't you build a parking garage? I mean, like-
If you want to pay, like, seventy million dollars, you can build a parking garage.
There are vacant, you know, parcels in the downtown corridor. They're, I'm not sure if they're, you know, for sale. But, I mean, has, has the city discussed acquiring or actually making them, you know, making an offer on some of them?
There's been some talk about that. I mean, a lot of them just simply aren't available. But, yeah, that's been discussed. Ultimately, you might find that you, that physical expansion is, is necessary. And of course, it comes with challenges. The cost of construction, and, you know, pursuing the land, and what's on that land now. If you expand northward from the northwestern public parking lot, the only place to expand is into where there are houses right now. So there's, there's very limited opportunity, and you have to be very considered about it. But ultimately, it may be the thing that has to happen.
Yeah. And, yeah, we talk about all, every, almost every meeting, but what are the options?
Yeah. And you kind of hit the nail on the head. The options are limited.
Well, Joe- Hey, Joe, and the last goals from our last master plan, they talked about reviewing the parking standards throughout the community. Do they ever do that? Like, I know we don't allow overnight parking in municipal lots.
Yeah.
Because we always talk about physical expansion, right? We've got to find some more space. But what about the rules around the parking? Not the residential side streets, but the municipal lots, for example?
Sure.
I think Nick brought that up, too.
That's, yeah, that's a good point, because, you know, if, if that PNC building ever gets developed, or that, you know, I'm sure that a lot of those residents or their visitors are probably going to be finding themselves parking in that, in that location, or the public lot.
Well, that's what we don't want to have.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, he's saying, it wasn't the standards.
Yeah. And I mean, like, I think it was Nick that brought up one time, that, you know, they talked about it, like, the downtown district, where they're like, well, if people are driving home, or taking an Uber home and getting home safely, we don't necessarily want to punish them if they leave their car overnight. But like, yeah, we, we don't necessarily also want people using it as their residential parking for downtown, right? So-
Is it twenty-four, you know, like?
Right.
Does it end up into like, a short, long-term situation?
Right.
Yeah. And, and thank you for pointing that out. And again, that is just my opinion and not, we're not making a direction on that whatsoever.
Oh, no, I think there's a valid point to that, yeah.
Okay. But one thing I just want to add, as I was thinking about it, as it was brought up earlier with the traffic calming, and kind of where we can try and relieve some pressure on parking. And while this master plan doesn't directly want to call it, hey, we are specifically doing this, it's more of a conceptually, this is what we want to do. One thing that we've really been talking about a lot, and as I've sat where I do now in City Hall, and seeing the traffic out on North Main Street, you know, it's twenty-five miles per hour. With the school district coming here, there's going to be a couple hundred more kids in this area. We've talked about it here, in that expanding the on-street parking from downtown on North Main Street, down to where City Hall property and the library end. And to have that be extended on-street parking, like it is on South Main Street, heading to Royal Oak, is something that, you know, I would personally recommend having in the master plan for public discussion, for people to consider talking about, as one of the potential action items that could be done in the master plan. Just because, you know, that is a clear area. It's not, well, it's going to be something new. It's more or less an extension of our downtown with how South Main looks with on-street parking. I was walking over from the meeting across the street from the library, and as the light was turning red, someone was going thirty-five and running right through the red light. And so to me, that is an exact example of why having one lane there will calm the traffic, will, will not fix the parking problem, because there's, you know, it's not going to be the magic number where it's enough, but it'll certainly help. And so, you know, in the discussion of having some specific items, that's one that I would really encourage you guys to at least talk about and consider. But I'll stop rambling on that, so.
Well, I'm curious, how many more spots? Did someone do the math on that, or no?
I did the math already. I can't remember what the number was offhand. What was the decent number?
It was probably forty to sixty. That's quite the range, but I don't want to, we don't want to say forty-seven, but it's probably forty to sixty, just based on-
Yeah, well, and then that only triggers our conversation earlier about the traffic calming through those, those areas that are going to bottleneck, right? And Elmwood is already a prime, you know, you go all the way from Rochester to Coolidge, essentially. I think that if we're going to have that conversation, it has to be followed up with, what are we going to do to stop people from just jetting through the neighborhoods to, to get around it, right? I think they have to go hand in hand. And I'm, I'm not saying that's, you know, I'm not shooting down your idea. I think that's-
I agree.
Yeah.
Wholeheartedly. I mean, we can't just have one thing changed and not expect that to, you know, parlay into something else. We've definitely got to consider, you know, what the outcome would be by doing that, and how we can fix any potential problems before it's a problem.
Yeah. And do you guys know, Joe, your opinion on how, like, those, do people tend to abide by those signs, like, no turning during these hours of a day, you know? Or, or do you think that people will just, is that not enough?
I think you have a substantial majority that will abide by those signs. The problem is the minority that won't.
Those are the speeders, right?
Right. Well, I mean, at the end of the day, right, it's like, it's like a stoplight or a, a speed limit sign, right? You're going to go eighty on the highway. You're going to, everyone's occasionally going to run a red light. It's not an uncommon thing, but it's, it's something that you, it, does it mitigate risk? And I think the answer would be yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
It makes, it improves the situation, yeah.
Okay.
It might take away ninety percent of the problem, you know, which is-
That's significant. If a sign does that much, it's impressive, yeah.
So your calculation was from where to where?
I was going up to the end of the block at City Hall, and the end of the block at the library, I believe.
And that's killing a lane and putting parking there, is that?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's not eating into some of the, the right-of-way, the current right-of-way?
No, it's all in the, the currently paved area, yeah.
And, and the cool thing now, and I'm sorry to cut you off real quick, but it might kind of tie into what you're thinking about, is that with the structure of it right now, we could essentially, I'd say, throw out some traffic cones and kind of see how it would, would work, instead of investing money into concrete, paving it, marking it, where we could block off the road so people don't choose to go down that lane. So we have a three-month test trial during, during the summer, or something like that, to see if it, if it helps or not.
Interesting.
Would you calm, would you start the calming or the bottlenecking, like, right after Elmwood or something?
Right after the light, I think, when it started.
Right after the Elmwood light?
Not in front of the light, like there is at Main Street.
Yeah. That was a trial and error. So we would definitely, like Joe said, make it more gradual.
Yeah, because there's probably like, three blocks between the City Hall and Elmwood. That would be a long-
You'd probably sign, and then maybe start, like, hey, get over, and then there'd be markings, and then finally the concrete would come out and curb it.
That'd be great, right?
Could use a spike strip, spike strip earlier.
I thought about that, throwing it out on the road. And you mean, like, you'll end at the city, or the senior center, or this, the rehab, I don't know what it is, the elderly place next door?
The nursing home, yes.
The nursing home, thank you.
That would be probably the start of where the on-street parking would be, and at least in, in my vision for it.
Sounds good to me. You're going to move the honking horns down this way and away from my house.
Yeah, it's right toward your house.
That was, that was a plan all along, so.
Four-thirty, five o'clock, that's all it is, honk, honk. I gotta get in there, I gotta get in there.
Oh, yeah, you can't leave your driveway, can you, at that time?
I try not to.
Yeah.
Sorry, I was just going to say, yeah, like, specifying this within the Module Three is an important topic, because people feel very strongly about it. And I want to have that discussion, and I want to see where we land, because personally, I think it's something we need to explore. And, yeah, I don't want to miss that. It's a very dramatic change.
It is.
People feel strongly about, but it could solve issues. We need to be able to present pros, cons, and alternate methods of, you know, what may come out of that. Like, we talked about going through neighborhoods and how we can fix that issue.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that's definitely something for the workshop to discuss.
Yeah. And again, just one final quick thing to add is, you know, I know that the, as a body, you know, you struggle with conceptually master plan and action, right? You got, you, you as a body want action, 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 and how you can tie in action with the plan. So that's why I wanted to specifically call that item, as, you know, you're thinking about mixed-use development for Module Five, is what's a potential item that we could talk about in the master plan that, you know, we're not, we're not saying this is going to happen on fourteen mile. This is our vision with how our conceptual plan works. So that's just to get the, the brain flowing on, on that.
Would you, Josh, think that the study should be important to be done prior to the, the workshop, and to have that data? Or is that something?
No, I mean, but we've, we've, this has been explored a lot through different bodies, right? So like, just pooling the information that we have today, and recognizing, I mean, I'm sure there's been multiple conversations, and this is the, you know, argument against and for, and how do we present in a way that it can either address more issues than it's going to cause, or vice versa, so.
Well, and I'm curious what your metrics would be for that study, and whose, how often are you taking those metrics? Or are you, are you basing it on how many citizens down that road call you? Or, like, what, do you have something in mind already?
So specifically, no, but I know that when there's a complaint for a resident says, says, you know, I think a stop sign should go at this intersection, they'll go to the police department. The police department will present, so the traffic, TIA, I don't know exactly what that acronym is, but they'll, they do parking studies, and then just general traffic. So they'll go out, test an area for twenty-four hours, maybe longer, depending on that area. And then based on the daily volume of traffic, they'll say, you know, if there's a certain number of people that are driving through this intersection at this time, we think a stop sign's necessary, or a yield, et cetera. You know, that's, that's kind of their approach. And so I imagine we'd either have the TIA do something, or a specific traffic engineering consultant, and conduct that study. And there's specific professionals that do this for, for a living, that was a little above, above my knowledge.
Okay, yeah. I mean, yeah, because, you know, a citizen might not call, because they just think, oh, it's temporary, right? But they're not thinking-
Well, we would certainly be very open on, on what we're doing. It wouldn't just, we're not going to show up one Wednesday picking your kid up from school, and why is there a bunch of parking on North Main right now? We would, we would definitely do a public engagement
Yeah.
approach, and make sure we would do a good job with that.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
All right. So moving on to those mixed-use development areas, I've suggested some goals there. And then I guess I just kind of want your reactions to them. I'll read them all through, and then we can kind of go through what, what you, how you feel about them. So for the BRD one, which is on South Main, continue the creation of a district by permitting uses that complement downtown Claussen and work well with the relatively small sites in the area. Really think that that's kind of the key context note there, is you have small sites. There's, there's a limit to what can occur on them. For the BRD two, support the continued economic vitality of the district and its contribution to the city's tax base while respecting its relationship to surrounding uses. And surrounding uses is probably just a euphemism for the neighborhoods next door, really. On North Main, I've got two there. North Main corridor will provide for a mix of uses in an appropriate scale. And then the design of North Main should reflect its role as a gateway to downtown Claussen and a need to control vehicle speeds, which of course speaks to that street parking. So I think that that, that second one, I was kind of figuring out where to put it. Could maybe go under infrastructure. It could maybe go under parking. It kind of speaks to all of them. And then for West fourteen mile, the fourteen mile corridor will, over time, become a more cohesive corridor that meets the needs of its businesses and provides opportunities for additional housing. One of the things with that meets the needs of its businesses that I was thinking about, is particularly that area around Gargantua, where some of the businesses have no parking, and some of them have like, a surfeit of it behind them that they're never using. Over time, we really want to balance that out and make sure that everything is served properly. Perhaps even, that's one place where we might look at trying to acquire some property for collective parking. And then finally, the planned unit development option should be a tool to achieve high-quality development with a public benefit, not otherwise achievable under conventional zoning. Really think we should look at our planned unit development language, and just make sure that we're getting out of it what we want to get out of it. So maybe being a little more specific on the kinds of things that we're- So, maybe being a little more specific on the kinds of things that we're looking to get in terms of public benefits when we do a planned unit development. You know, maybe there's a, you have to have two of the five or something like that, you know? Just looking at the criteria and making sure that they all make sense and that they're getting us kinda what we want. So, um.
I would agree with that, very much so. I think it would be really great to specify, that's where we can bring in our sustainability things like green space. What are you adding to our city, kinda thing?
Exactly, exactly. So, that, that's, that's precisely the kinda thing I'm thinking about is, is like, all right, we're, we've got this thing that allows us to change the standards. What do we really wanna be getting out of that, you know? If we're giving a little bit, we should be getting a little bit. And, yeah, do we want one of those things to be passive stormwater management through the landscape? You know, maybe alternative energy or something like that. Um, but I think that we should really be thinking about, all right, here's what we want. Let's make sure that we're gonna get at least some of it with each of these projects if someone's bringing one forward.
Yeah. What, on the, on the, um, North Main Corridor, um, uh, reflect its role to the gateway, when you say gateway, I think of Gateway. Is it even still called Gateway over there? Or Westgate?
Westgate, yeah.
Westgate, but that was, isn't that language in the Westgate as a gateway to Claussen kinda thing? So, how far north Main are you going? Are you talking all the way up to Maple?
No, really more up to Elmwood.
To Elmwood?
Yeah.
Um. And is, is that what you mean as far as suggestion one and two? So, are you looking to expand?
Suggestion two is really speaking to the downtown, to the parking on Main, you know, like the design of Main, trying to slow vehicles down. So, that's also south of Elmwood.
Provide a mix of uses at an appropriate scale. So, I guess I would like to, to know and be more specific here because there can be misinterpretations of the intent. I, I know we talked a little bit about it, but can you refresh my recollection on, on, are you talking about, like, what, what zone are we talking here, Joe?
Well, I mean, it's mostly O-one right now, which doesn't really make a lot of sense.
So, would it be more, make more sense to, to define it by the zone so that we can have more flexibility in the O-one? Or, because I, I feel like it's a little bit ambiguous.
I think you wanna, I think you wanna focus on the corridor more so than the zoning district. It's there. That might not be the appropriate zoning district for that corridor. It's a question as to whether or not O-one is the appropriate zoning district for anything right now because there's just not much being built. And you can include office uses in your other commercial districts. So, um, you know, we, O-one might just be sort of an obsolete designation there at this point.
But I guess I, I, I just meant to define, and it doesn't have to be, like, I'm just saying what, what area of North Main. I would like to define North Main in the parameters of where that begins and ends. Because to me, I was thinking, are we trying to build it all the way to, you know, fifteen, Maple, fifteen mile there? So, a further look at O-one to me, you know, like you set up to Elmwood or, or past Baker because then you have RM one. I don't know. Just further details on that, I guess.
Sure, yeah. We can definitely define it for us fourteen mile to Elmwood. Okay.
So, there's a lot of houses, we talked about that already, didn't we? That specific district. There's a lot of deep lots and homes still there and is that where you're at, Greg? Yeah, I mean. And what type of uses you mean? Are you talking mixed uses there?
Potentially. Um, it really kinda depends on where we land.
Is that something we're looking to define within the, the master plan update? The specific types of uses?
Yep.
Okay. So, how many different areas, how many different zoning areas are we talking about incorporating mixed uses in? And have you, do you have an idea of that?
Well, it's really, I mean, outside of the downtown, we're looking at really primarily that North Main from fourteen mile to Elmwood and, uh, fourteen mile road, uh, possibly South Main, um, kinda depends. But, um, really, those are the main ones. BRD two, it's not happening. That's, that's not what that area is for.
Well, I just would like to give a real deep thought about just painting it with a, one brush of a mixed use. Um, because the, you know, I think we have to soften it a little for, for residents who come in here and are very much affected by that. So, I would, you know, is there consideration for a, a different, um, mixed-use type ordinance for different zones? And how that might incorporate, depending on the, what's around it?
I think you wanna treat each one of these corridors differently.
For sure.
They're, they're not all the same.
We can't just say RM one everywhere. RM, I mean, I know we're not trying to do two, right? And have thirty-foot whatever.
You're probably not gonna do RM two.
Yeah, but I, I do think that that's something that we should maybe look deeper into and see what does that mean? You know, like I've said before, I know we can't get site-specific, but there's a general feel to each site and what they might, might feel natural. And we did talk about, I know Andy went over, you know, fourteen mile and in that transition of that middle, missing, sorry, missing middle. These are just overarching concepts for you right now, right, Joe? But are, are we gonna get more specific before we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm not sure what we're doing with this. If I have to call out things now and, or forever hold my peace or?
No, no, I mean, certainly call it out now if you've got it on your mind. But, yeah, what we'll do is we'll take this and refine it based on our conversation and then we'll start putting those ideas underneath each one of these goals and kinda let you take that in and, and respond to that as well.
Can we ever get like a big ol' map that we can all reference while we're here?
Sure.
For, for one of, you know, when we talk master plan, I always pull it up, but it might be helpful for us all to kind of see visually.
Sure.
Thanks.
That was what I had for the evening. Um, and so, um, we'll put some stuff together for next time and get that in front of you. And, uh, we should be seeing that, so two, kinda two pieces of the draft as it's coming together. This, plus a little bit of depth beyond each goal for you to evaluate, and then, um, the sustainability piece.
Thanks for the nice sheet.
Sure.
Thank you. And Joe, do you think the sustainability, um, like the action plan that we've created, is that gonna be like an appendix to this? Or are we gonna have to kinda mold this into it?
It's gonna be an actual chapter of the.
Okay. 'Cause I know that's pretty detailed and, and might be a different kinda format, so just kinda curious. Thanks.
Are you guys gonna present to us at any point in time again? Or doesn't they happen annually or something? Or no?
We'll, we'll present the draft once they're.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think it's ninety percent there and there's a meeting tomorrow to talk about any last edits before it comes to this body.
Oh.
Are you, are your meetings recorded and broadcasted or no?
Anybody can attend them. They're all online.
They are videotaped online?
I, I don't.
I don't know if they've been recorded unless Stephanie's on that.
But, um, but yeah, they are all open to the public and there is a Zoom link on the website for everyone.
Oh, Zoom link, okay. And what time?
What's that?
What time?
Six P M.
Six P M tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, if we've, we're done with the master plan, what do we have under other business?
Uh, nothing else.
Nothing under other business, but a planner's report.
I don't have anything else.
Nothing under that. Staff report and training opportunities.
All right. Sit tight, everyone.
All right, so earlier today, and I apologize that it came out a little bit later than usual, I had the, uh, planning commission report sent out. And as I shared last time, I just wanted to make sure I could provide, um, as many updates on projects, uh, ordinances, uh, and then other items as I could. So, I had to wait a little bit longer than I wanted to, to make sure I had accurate information. So, I'm just gonna run through a couple of specific items, uh, that I want to, uh, acknowledge. On Monday, February twelfth, Michelle Cuckoo, the city clerk, emailed all commissioners the ethics disclosure form, which per the Code of Ethics Ordinance, all staff and volunteers need to complete. These are due by April fifteenth. Uh, so again, in that email I sent this morning, everyone does have a copy of that disclosure form. Uh, and then, uh, I can also provide hard copies if anyone wanted, would like to do that today. And if there are questions about the ethics disclosure form, I'd be happy to answer them, uh, now or, uh, at your convenience. Again, we have until April fifteenth to submit those. Uh, an exciting training opportunity coming up is with the Oakland County Planning Department and the Michigan Associat-, Michigan Association of Planning, which they're hosting an in-person workshop on planning and zoning essentials. This training event is Monday, April twenty-ninth, from three to eight P M at the Oakland County Executive Office Building. Topics discussed will include public hearing procedures, site plan review, comprehensive planning, zoning ordinances and variances, how to determine practical difficulty, standards for decision-making, and much more. Uh, the final deadline to register for this event is April twenty-sixth, but since space is limited, I would like to have a final count, um, by March fifteenth from the, the board if anyone would be interested in that. Uh, there is a cost to this event, which the city will cover. Uh, if everyone wants to go, I think that'd be great, but I find that hard to believe that we would get all nine of you to, uh, be able to skip out on work for a little bit. Uh, I am planning on going to that event, so if there's any interest from commissioners, I really encourage you to go. I think it's gonna be, uh, a lot of information packed into a couple hours of training. Uh, so again, uh, please let me know if you're interested by March fifteenth.
I'm sorry, what, what date, what's the date?
Uh, it's April twenty-ninth, which is a Monday, and it's from three to eight P M at Oakland County, uh, the executive office. And I can provide the exact address, uh, as we get closer. Uh, and they are providing a late dinner as well, so it's always nice.
Nick, do you know if there's any kind of slide packets, anything that, for, if you can't attend live, that you would be able to share after the fact? Is that something you can explore?
If I'm going, I'm sure I'll be able to get some type of, whether it's the exact slides that's presented, um, some type of physical content that, whether I'm allowed to or not, I would be happy to share in some capacity with you all.
It is a paid event, so they might not allow that, but.
But at the end of the day, the Michigan Association Plan is very good at making their, their, uh, information available to the public.
Yeah, it'd be very tough to attend right now with my situation, but I'd be interested in whatever information comes out of it.
Of course. And I know that they have some, uh, remote options as well. I just don't have that information right now, so I can share that with, with you separately if that would fit your schedule better. Um, under ordinance updates, the one thing I wanna call out is that during the next meeting in March twelfth, we'll be discussing short-term rental, uh, the short-term rental ordinance again in a little bit more of a, a contained capacity. When it comes to site plans, uh, site plan updates, those are provided in the packet. Um, have, uh, those projects are ongoing. If anyone has any questions on a specific project, I would be happy to answer that. The, when it comes to the TCOs, nine oh five west Maple, uh, they finally were able to get their fire hydrant work completed, uh, which was held up by the county because Maple is a county road. Uh, we have that final certificate of occupancy inspection, uh, scheduled. It should be this week. Uh, when it comes to one east fourteen mile Grand River, their site plan, uh, was approved in December. And, um, their TCO was issued in, in, in December as well, or I'm sorry, November thirtieth. Uh, that is this year next week, but the parts for the, the garage door were delayed due to supply chain issues. So, uh, at this point, I'm, I'm anticipating that'll be extended, but they do not want that, uh, big black door blocking their fourteen mile entrance. So, I think they're probably more eager than we are to get that completed. Uh, when it comes to two eighty-eight west fourteen mile, uh, I'll probably be able to provide a little bit more of a greater, uh, update on that, either next meeting or the meeting after. There was, uh, uh, an agreement between the city council and the, um, owner of that property. Uh, and again, I'll, I'll likely be able to provide, provide more information, uh, later. Uh, when it comes to upcoming site plan, six oh two North Rochester Road, which is Gil's Collision, they are going to have a roof renovation, minor facade modifications in front of you. I believe that should be March twelfth as well. And then we are also looking at having a site plan come in front of, uh, the board for five oh two South Main Street, which is a former CNC bump shop, which includes general site improvements. And, uh, that one is probably going to be later in March, if not April at this point. I did not have a comprehensive list added to the new businesses, so we do have a couple more that have, uh, joined our lovely community since. I've updated that, but hoping, hoping to have a better grasp on that going forward. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that specific PC, uh, report.
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Short-term rental, we, we've kicked this around quite a bit. What do you anticipate happening in the next meeting? Do we have to prepare anything? Like, should we be thinking about zoning?
Yeah, so it'll be zoning-related.
Okay.
Because the, the city council, of course, had their ordinance passed, not related to zoning. It was more just, uh, applying for a rental certificate for short-term. Uh, so this will be a continued discussion on zoning, which, uh, Joe will have his, uh, memo updated with what was previously discussed. And, you know, what options do we have, whether it's a percentage in a certain block? And then, uh, some of the other items that we have to, you know, guide where short-term rentals can be located in the city.
Is there a public hearing component or anything else?
At this point, it's just discussion. So, uh, I anticipate if, if the PC comes to agreement with language, which will not be next meeting unless, there is something magical that comes up, I imagine we'll wanna have a second discussion on that. Uh, the planning commission would vote to approve the, the draft zoning language, uh, and then that would go to city council. City council would have a first reading of it. Then, uh, during the second reading of any ordinance, uh, there's a public hearing component to that.
Okay. And just for productivity of that meeting, if there's anything that, I don't know if it's Joe and the team, can provide in terms of what other cities have done? 'Cause I know we talked about density and all that. Um, that'd be really helpful, so we're not kinda just guessing at what we believe is the best suggestion for, for the city.
And so, I'm sorry to cut you off, but would you look for information for like our direct neighbors, so Madison Heights, Ferndale, Royal Oak, Troy? Or do you wanna kind of look at more comparable communities where it's Rochester, Wixom, when it comes to population?
I would go broader with it. Some cities that look like Claussen, right? I think would be beneficial just to see what others are doing instead of trying to this body determine what we think is best. Um, 'cause I know it's a touchy subject and I think there's probably already solutions that are out there that we can mimic that work well. So, it'd just be helpful to make sure we can have a good discussion.
And again, we, we are gonna wanna keep in mind that, that it is something that is still new. And so, there are, you know, things we'll wanna consider, but of course, Joe and Renes will dive into that later, uh, when we have that, that discussion.
Thank you.
And I only have one point under the ordinance updates, the wall heist requirements. The amendment was proposed, was approved on September twelfth. It's a, uh, secondary review of an ordinance amendment regarding walls being reviewed by Giffles and Webster. What seems to be the problem on approving the heist of walls?
Uh, I believe that is just my miss updating that. Um, I believe that we approved an ordinance. It's just gonna go in front of city council. But because it's a, a minor ordinance amendment, we're waiting until we have a couple of them to be published and posted together to go in front of the council. And so, going forward, any project that comes in for, they'll, we'll, we'll make sure that their, their proposal abides by the new language.
I just feel comfortable if the ordinance is enacted before we have somebody else coming in and wanting a four-foot wall. You know, we, we agree to six foot.
Right. And, and I, I certainly understand that, but.
We wanna be able to enforce that, yeah.
I'd say ninety-nine point nine percent of the people that do business in Claussen, we meet with at least once, if not twice. And they're very cognizant of, you know, what your perspective is on, on items. And that's, of course, one that we've been keeping in mind as we discuss with, uh, applicants.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good. And anybody else, uh, questions?
Um, I mean, I just have a general question about, um, when we will, as a body, discuss the P U D from last meeting? And be, is that gonna happen when they're in front of us again with the site plan review? Or is that gonna happen where we kind of have a little discussion as a planning commission about, um, where we, where? I don't know the language to use right now, but just, um.
You don't want the information dumped the day of our meeting?
Oh, well, no, because the way that it was presented to us last time is much different than the way it reads in the ordinance. So, I think there should be a, a discussion as a planning commission, maybe a, a little refresher on a P U D, kind of.
Yeah, so I was gonna touch on the, the P U D and all that stuff. I just wanna get through the general report first before we had that conversation.
I thought we were at the end of our report.
No, we are. I just wanted to get through the, to get through the, the paper report and that, have a discussion, and then have that conversation separately. So in relation to the PUD language and how it is written and perceived, Joe and I spoke with the city attorney, and that the city center language is going to be the language that we abide by when it comes to reviewing the PUD there, just as it fits the district. And that's the, the decision that we made based on precedent and, and how, how the plan will be reviewed. So city center language will.
I think that we need to have, the city center language is the language you would like to review and use for the PUD?
That is correct. That is the underlying language that governs the, the district.
That's not how our PUD ordinance is written.
Right. I'm sharing the opinion of the city attorney.
Well, maybe we should have him here before we do that.
And, and he's gonna be here next meeting. I'm telling you the update that I have for you now.
Okay. That, that to me doesn't make sense. That just sounds like someone is making a decision there in the secretary or in the office, not the planning commission, and it's the planning commission's decision per the ordinance to make those decisions. So what are our variances going to be? What are we basing a variance on?
So based on their plan, which they're, they're updating and the tentative schedules to have that in front of you.
No, I'm saying just give me a zoning for what are we varying?
Okay, so the commercial liner use would be one of their, their deviations from the zoning language.
The PUD specifically says that you use the multifamily, if there's a multifamily use, and there's supposed to be a marrying of variances and uses that the planning commission. That's part of that component, in my opinion, of the planning commission being able to ask for more in give and take. So I don't see where, in our ordinance, it says that the attorney, Nick, or Giffords, Webster gets to decide to tell a planning how to do a PUD.
So it, it's a legal opinion with how the ordinance is written. That's the best I can offer you right now.
That is absolutely, okay. We'll see when Renes gets here.
What I, what I will add is, while, while the PUD language does specifically state that RM2 standards will follow, part of the, the issue with that is the, I mean, you start with the setbacks. You've got a 50-foot setback that is required with that district. I mean, that would basically limit any development in Gloucester.
Of course, but that's something you tell us and we're aware of and that we will give leeway to. But we can't just wholesale say, oh, we'll just say, because Nick and Giffords, Webster and Renes said so, we're gonna decide that it's a city center and completely disregard our zoning ordinance. I mean, like, the ordinance is essentially a law. Like, we tell builders they have a right to build here because it's in our ordinance. It's the law. But you're telling us that as a planning commission, we don't have the ability to, to do our job essentially, because you guys are gonna do it for us.
I am relating information.
That's fine. I disagree very much, and I, I guess I'll talk to Renes when he comes.
All we can do is ask them for the information we're looking specifically for, have them define it to us.
Um, their, the ordinance defines.
I think we have to question them more on, on the background from, from where you're going with it.
So if, if I may, what we can do is, is next meeting, maybe we'll have specifically on the agenda, discussion of the planned unit development ordinance language, and that way we can have these type of questions and back and forth more clearly with Renes in attendance, who, again, I said will be here. If that would make you as a body more comfortable with reviewing them the next time they're in front of you, I think that's something we can certainly do.
Well, Renes is, there's no way he's gonna tell me that the ordinance says something different than what I read it to say. There's nothing that he can say that is gonna tell me it says, no, I get to tell you it's a city center when it clearly doesn't say city center here. That's, if you're worried about CFOs in, in certain entities coming and taking the place, this is planning commission's work here. This is not okay that, that someone's gonna come or anybody. This is our due diligence is, is part of that PUD. It's part of our due diligence to look at the different zones, look at the actual PUD ordinance, and as a body, decide where we're gonna give leeway, where we're gonna, you know. And yeah, we're not gonna require a 50-foot setback. I mean, that's ridiculous. But to tell us that, no, you have to look at it through the lens of a city center ordinance, that, that to me is outright going against the ordinance in itself. And I have a huge issue with that. I don't know if I'm the only one on the planning commission, but if they get to decide every time they come in front of us for a PUD, what are we here for? Why don't you just approve them? That's, that's not okay. That is said, you know, come in front of us with, with Renes, and I'll tell him the same thing.
Well, I'll make sure we, we'll have another conversation about it. I'll have him watch this so we can specifically gather your concerns, and we'll hopefully be able to address them.
And Nick, is that opinion in, in writing when you guys did the evaluation between?
Don't, don't have an opinion in writing, no.
All right.
But I'm, at this point, I imagine one may be coming.
Yes, okay.
Anything else?
Just a, a follow-up to the public noticing component that was discussed. So in review of, of the ordinance language, the 15-day notice requirement was met. We had the public hearing. With that said, I believe we did share that you have the power to open a public hearing like you did today, like you, like you can do when they come in front of us again. When it comes to mailing out a public hearing notice, there is not ground precedent to do that again. So that is something that is done and paid for when an applicant applies for variance, PUD, special land use. The, the mailing, the time that goes into that is covered in their application fee. And so that is why at this point, a pub, another public notice for this project is not something that we're anticipating will be done.
I see how that works. I find it disappointing in the fact that, yes, I can open up for public if public is here, but if public isn't aware of it, they're not here to, to make their complaints or their opinions given. I see it's, I see how it works. People are aware of it now, I think, because they, they've seen what's going on, just as long as they're staying up to date with the calendar and know what's going on, when it's gonna be on our next agenda. I, I don't, personally, I don't think it's the right thing to do. I, personally, I think if it's something that's affect, that's gonna affect the neighborhood, I think they should be notified. I was notified by letter, and so was the other lady that came in and complained, but I don't know how far that mailing went out.
Right, so it's a 300-foot radius of the property, and everyone will get that same mailing. So when it comes to the, the strict requirement, right? So we met that 15-day notice on the last one.
I realize what the ruling says, yeah.
Right, but I, I see where you're coming from, and I, I certainly am not gonna disagree. We want the public to be engaged, aware of what's going on. If another notice goes out, we don't have to follow the 15 days. So we, we could send this notice 10 days out, and we'll still be in compliance because we did meet the 15-day original component. The other item I want to add for your awareness is that the, the scope of the project is shrinking. It's, there, there's not an, an increase when it comes to any density, size, building, anything like that. So the project is, is getting smaller in that sense as well.
It, it's just similar to the apartments going in on 14, where they bulldozed three houses. The neighbors were not told that that was happening, and I was told that they don't have to be told because it's approved use of that property. Okay, I get it. It's approved use, you can chop down the houses, put up a building. I just think it's the right thing to do, just to, just to let people know.
Yeah, so how do we go about that, changing that?
Guess we go around and knock on doors.
Yeah, that's true, because there's nothing in there that gives you the mechanism to order or to ask or to.
Doesn't have to be legally done.
Yeah, beating, meeting the bare minimum. I mean, what's the right thing to do to, to, you know, to serve the citizens, really? And then again, the, the 300-foot thing, it's like, that's in the.
Across the street.
Yeah, across the street. That really doesn't notify too many, a large pool of people, when it's, especially in the downtown district, where like the whole city actually benefits.
And they're changing two zones and making it whatever zone the admin decides they want to make it, essentially.
If we can do like Bandit signs, you know, that, you know, are posted, so everybody that drives by is, is notified that there is a public hearing.
Coming soon.
Hey, why don't we add that to our master plan update? There's an item.
So I, I fully agree with what, what you're saying. I'm just saying we, we don't have an ordinance in place for that, and I've been researching what other municipalities have. I believe I shared during the last meeting, Berkeley, I want to say, has an ordinance in place that they do have those political, like yard signs essentially that they put up for, for public noticing, but we just don't have that right now. I mean, that's how unfortunate ordinances are created when you.
So why would it take two to actually send out a notification in this specific case? What, what, what has to be done? What would have to be done to make a notification go out?
Before that question, I just want to say, yeah, there's tons of language out there that we could borrow from other communities that require the posting of a sign on the site. That's actually done in, in a lot of communities for planning developments. And some communities do it for like, if somebody's going for a variance or anything, you know, that requires a public hearing. But for planning unit developments in particular, there are a lot of ordinances that require a sign to be posted on the property until the, from the, basically from 15 days prior to the hearing until the matter's been resolved. So you'll have that sign out there the whole time.
Joe, can we add that to our community outreach, like goal in our master plan?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. That's, it's a pretty simple change to make to the ordinance.
Okay.
I understand like the, you know, doing the bare minimum to meet, you know, to satisfy the ordinance, but why, what's to stop you from going above and beyond? Like, why can't you go above and beyond what the ordinance specifies? Is it a budgetary thing? Is it like, you know?
So generally speaking, when it comes to just site plans, is that you run into the potential that if, if you send a second notice out for one site plan and not for another, and you did for that secondary plan, they could file lawsuit for unfair treatment with how their, their plan's been, been reviewed.
And that's the same thing that can happen when admin's telling a PUD that we're gonna zone for a city center, but the planning commission believes that it's supposed to be by the ordinance. I have a huge issue. Let's change the ordinances, guys. I don't know. Yeah.
I'm certainly not opposed to that.
There's a, you, somebody, you mentioned an ordinance review board. So how, is that, is that right? Is there a separate body?
The city council has a committee with two members that they're meeting, the, the date just changed. It's at 6 o'clock before the regular city council meeting, and that was initiated due to the charter. But, you know, they're talking about any type of ordinance. I imagine once the ordinances that have been, needed to be added from the charter are completed, that's gonna be a lasting committee that talks about these type of items.
Are they the only ones with authority? Or do we have some authority to make, you know, amendments to some of these ordinances?
So the planning commission has authority to recommend amendments to the zoning ordinance, which is the document that can be found on, online or under clear zoning, and then recommendations to the general ordinance as well.
So yes.
Kinda.
And just going back to, you know, gathering client, gathering customer clients, I'm sorry. You know, wow, this is my lack of sleep with a newborn. Citizen input, you know? Obviously, there's budgetary constraint. Everything, and this is just my annoyance with, you know, government in general, takes a long time. We're talking about things that could take months, years, whatever. Thinking short-term, low-cost, we have a social media platform. Is there any ability to be proactive about here's what's coming in these meetings? I, yes, it's posted online. It's kind of tucked away on the website. There are people that check that on a regular basis, but I know, like, for instance, social media and the website, the Facebook pages, whatever it is, like, is there a way to trigger some kind of regular cadence of this is what's going to be reviewed during these meetings? Just a quick link, even if it's just linking right to the webpage, that it just kind of pops up on people's, like, you know, notification that something's happening in a short term if you'd like to be a part of it. This is how you can get involved. Thoughts, opinions? I know there's a lot of, I don't know what the, who's being paid what at, at, you know, in our government to be able to maintain something like that, but.
So the short answer is yes, we can do that. Already planned on doing it specifically. Well, I don't think we can do like a flashing thing on the front page of our website for the planning commission meeting, but I plan on putting something front and center on the, on the homepage. But long-term is we have a gentleman starting in early March for, specifically for communications, where we're going to be ramping up our community engagement as a whole, which I'm personally really excited for. So items like that, like you were touching on, is certainly something we'll be expanding.
Yeah, and again, because we need to have fair treatment for everyone who comes in front of us with site plan, being able to come up with a cadence that every week, there is somebody dedicating X amount of hours to update citizens through social media or something like that. That's fantastic. We can make that.
Right. And that's gonna be his primary job function.
Okay.
So will you download a new app next month or something, right?
Uh, not, not next month, and I don't know if an app is gonna be necessary for.
I had to buy a new pad because it's the last one. Are we gonna get that camera replaced by chance? I see it's gone now. It's been disconnected for a long time. Now it's physically gone.
So we, we had some IT functions.
Those two are dead, I think. I think those are the only two working cameras.
We're working on getting those fixed by the end of this fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
Okay.
But again, I mean, at, at the end of the day, too, the council chamber is gonna have to change in some capacity as well with the addition of two more council members in 2025.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So that's why we're a little bit hesitant to make major financial improvements to the chambers, because we don't know exactly what it will look like.
Anything else for Nick? Seeing none, we will have no legal update because we don't have a lawyer this evening. Before we have adjourned, anybody else have anything they want to voice on?
Can I just say that, please, everybody, go read the PUD ordinance. If you have an issue with finding it, reach out to me. I'll send it to you. I, I know that we're all passionate about our, our place here, and I just think that if we allow an administration to come in and, and take the place of our deciding factor, it's setting a precedence that we can't turn back, because the next builder with a PUD that comes in here is gonna reference.